Hi, this is Praios and yeah. I'm a professional gambler and today we will again go through some hands I played today and yeah, later I will probably also do some training with PLO Trainer but not sure yet if we got enough time. Let's see how fast we get through the hands. So let's start with the first one. This is approximately 50 BB so we put the PLO Trainer at 50 BB. Um yeah, the small blind is stealing and it's on us. Ace, 3, 6, 4. I guess it's defended but better make sure. Hmm, where is the single suited version? Yeah, it's getting defended. Yep, okay. Played this correctly. Um. Yeah, let's let's first look into this hand against a shorty. Oh, sorry. Wow, fucking allergy. Yeah. We got King for 5. We are supposed to 3-bet and if he ships it in, I guess we don't fold anymore. Yep, that's exactly the case. Um yeah, I guess I was chicken and I just called. Yeah, it's also kind of tough because there's another deeper stack behind and this is not adjusting for this. Uh let's see um how um we are supposed to react to an open from the button if we are 100 BB. Because this is sort of a mix because one guy behind has 100 BB in the open raiser has only like yeah between 50 and 60 BB. Yeah, let's figure that out. What the proper reaction is to an open from a normal stacked guy? I guess it's close. Double suited is definitely a re-raise. A single suited might be just a call. And yeah, that's very close. Unfortunately, we cannot trust this sim. Um as the results didn't converge to an equilibrium yet, so I guess do whatever you want. Uh it seems fine to do both calling and or re-raising for 100 BB. And as I said, double suited, this is definitely a re-raise. Let's also find out another interesting thing. What happens if we got four bet? With our hand. At 100 BBs, um double suited we should call or other hands we should fold. Yeah, not that surprising. Exactly what I would have guessed. Um. Hmm, yeah, this sucks. As we don't have sims for 50 BB, so we got to do this with 100 BB stack. Um yeah, it's it's in-between, so should be fine. Uh let me first get the correct board for you. Check. 8. 2s. Wow, we got this one and it's exactly the one we are looking for. Not exactly, but almost. Fucking ace, ace. So what is our hand now doing? Yeah, we are betting most of the time. And the preferred sizing is 50%. What is our range doing? Also a lot of betting. Okay, let's find out once we bet small, how we are supposed to react if re-raised. Can we still fold in decent amount? Call some and also get all in some. Yeah, we are not folding that much, but some. Guess our hand probably folds. Yeah, it is. But if we got diamonds, we all add or diamonds is the backdoor flush draw in this example. Yeah, already good enough to get it in. Um I expect that this is a bet get it in against someone with only um 70 BB stack at the start of the hand. Um not quite sure what I did, but probably that. Um, oh, that's also an interesting one. So raise call. It's on us. King, 10, 7, 9. Honestly, I expect this to be a call or fold. I guess it's a call, but might be wrong. Again, uh the sim didn't run long enough, but looks like um the double suited version wants to re-raise and the single suited version, it appears to be very close between calling and folding. So yeah, calling is most likely okay, especially with one weaker guy in the pot too. Oh. This one is brutal too. I think in-game I folded and most likely that's the correct play. I assume, but let's find out. Oh, it's not. It's a call and it seems like it's not even close. Yeah, okay, learned something. I mean, this hand definitely has a bad playability, but yeah, seems like this is a must-defend. But yeah, often you have an overpair and then you play sick guessing games. Yeah, but the solver wants even even the rainbow version should be defended. I think that's a bit too much as yeah, we as as a human will not play perfectly. Uh but yeah, okay. Are there any kings being folded in this spot? Not many, I guess. Okay, trip kings get folded in the very weakest ones with no connectivity. And rainbow versions only as it seems. I just see trips and stuff with no or very little connectivity. Okay, that's uh okay, again, there are some hands as the solver wasn't sure yet what to do. All these with 98% are the ones I'm talking about. Okay. Learned something. This is not a fold. And it's not even close according to GTO and given that our opponent also is a bit loser in his 3-bets than GTO suggests, um this is even more must defend. So yeah, pretty um bad mistake I did there and yeah. So we learned in this hand that King-King is actually most of the time defended if um you face a 3-bet from the blinds. So this was an important hand for me. This one is just tough, I guess. Um. The five bets are not five, four bets are some best, not much money left. Let's see if we're like a 5% maybe 6% range. This also should be more top-heavy than normal as here is a short stack or a mid-stake. So let's see how we do against 6% on the board like this. I expect to be no favorite ever, but I could have just barely enough equity to make folding incorrect here. Uh no, that's not close. So let us do the numbers. 21 plus 52. I'm not good in math. Well, I'd say I'm good in math, but not good in doing calculations. Um so I need to pay 21 in order to win, what is it, uh 94 or 95, I think. So we need 22%, but according to this, we only got 15% and my fold was correct. Okay, next hand. Um by the way, um I will give away the two promised free coachings very soon. And yeah, if you want to apply for it, um yeah, check out the video I made about this on YouTube. Um not much you need to do in order to uh be a part of this and have a big chance to get a free coaching other than subscribing to my Twitch, my Twitter and my YouTube and also commenting below the video um in which I announce the free coachings. So it's not entirely free, but yeah, you you guess, you get the point. Uh yeah, let's let's look into the next one. I guess that's a fold, but uh let's find out. So raise and it's on us. And we got 6, 7, 7, 10. Think that's what we got. 6, 7, 7, 10. Yeah, should be a fold, I assume, but am I right? No, I'm not right. It's it's double suited, so we should call. Okay, when I did the right thing, um yeah, I thought this is normally a fold, but yeah, I'm wrong. Um yeah, but I assume that with some fun players behind, um it makes sense to get in the pot trying to play a pot within. But yeah, as you can see, this is a call even against tracks. Yeah, this sucks hardcore, but I guess um not much I can do other than check folding. So the action was raise call. I squeeze, he calls, the two bets called and then everyone else calls. And yeah, the board is not too favorable for us. Uh also hard to guess what these guys might have, so he is very loose. He's also not folding to 3-bets really, so he has like uh 4% to 55%. Uh same more or less is true for this guy, so he has this range on the flop. Um the other call call is very hard to model here. Um. Let's give him, how do you do double pairs? Um it's RR and I'm not sure which other character is also another pair. Uh I can try to find out or chat can tell me if someone knows. So let's do uh hmm, what might be another uh what is we put this in? No, that's not working, so there was another letter, but I don't remember which one to put in double pairs. Uh fuck, what's the translation of this? Some rank R of any, some rank R of some suit W. Ah, that's the suit, so that's not working. What if we put in UU? UU is working, so let's see some hands. Yeah, so we can do RR UU. So that will be a bit of work and let's also put in dollar, one gap, double suited. Dollar, zero gap. Double, oops. Uh so one gapper and perfect rundown, he will play this way. Double pairs if we are double suited, let's say, maybe some single suited either, but yeah, whatever. Um what else could he play like this? Um yeah, I think that's mainly it, right? Yeah, okay, he wants to play with some of the fish, so let's put in some some two gappers as well. And yeah, although he's also would have the very low crappy ones, so that's probably bullshit. Let's whatever, let's just, oh, we forgot our hand. Uh yeah. Six diamonds, check cards. Check cards is correct. Uh something went wrong here. Uh the visit is correct. Ace. Clubs, so now we should be good to go. And yeah, against the range we gave them, we do very well, surprisingly. What if we make this that way? So yeah, that's very surprising. We do very well, so maybe bad calling is the way to go. Um what happens if we don't block um the jack? Uh let's make this 3. Okay, our equity goes down a lot. We don't have a bot pair locked. Yeah, it might be the case that betting and getting it in is correct. I mean, with a gut shot too, this is definitely the case. But this looks like I should get it in. I guess this is because two of the guys are very insane. What happens if we play against normal opponents? Does this still get it in? I guess not. Yeah, it looks like um if we put in more, let's normal ranges, that we should not get it in. But um with two guys who are basically playing any four or close to any four, get it in seems fine. I mean, we often, if we have to get it in, we are often not doing that well, but if um we still have the chance that everyone folds and yeah, against the ranges and not much money left, um it seems to be correct to just ship it in. Um and yeah, it helps also to block one of the board pairs, making it less likely that our opponents have to bear. Yeah, I yeah, I misplayed that. I think I checked folded, but I guess many people would do so. So yeah, moving on. Oh, that's a tough one too. Uh not sure if I can call or should call. I mean, yeah, although, let's see what the solver thinks about this. We cannot, maybe unfortunately have to ignore the limper. Uh we were in the big blind. So back to poker trainer, raise. And he re-raises and it's on us. I hope our hand is in the 3-bet range, so that we can look into this. Is it 8-8 on 8-9-9? I think it's this way. Oh, he wants us to ship all in actually and not to call. I guess that's one of the few um bluffs, let's say qualified bluffs. Uh but yeah, I I actually think that folding is most likely the way to go. Um. Eh, let's what? Uh let's because um I say folding is the way to go because this guy is a very big nit and let's see how our hand does against a very big nit. Let's give him like 5%. Oh, our hand does surprisingly well, even against a big nit. Um but what if this a big nit having aces most of the time? Yeah, then we could consider folding. Uh let's give him aces and ace, King. Uh yeah, probably that's how his range might look. Um what else can more nitty guys get in? Are they ever doing this with rundowns? Not that often, I guess. And here's this total three bet is only four. So yeah, I guess will not spew as much as other people. Yeah, I guess folding should be fine because if we call, we don't hit the flop hard that often. We could look into this with questions, but yeah. Yeah, but with a pair in our hand, we don't flop too great that often, so I guess against this opponent it's probably correct to just let it go, but against people with wider ranges, you should actually get it in according to GTO. Uh yeah, that's pretty sick. But okay. Okay, uh that's a tough one too. Again, although this guy isn't that nitty, but he still is, yeah, he's yeah, he's having like normal stats, so he might even be uh trained in GTO ranges. So whoop, whoop. I hope this is now in the 3-betting range, but it might be the case that my 3-bet was too loose. And he's only doing it with the double suited version, but let's find out. Is Queen 10? No, he's also doing it with some weaker things. And yeah, we should fold our hand. And call if we are double suited. Um let's change our hand a little bit. I guess we might have a call even with the single suited version if we remove the King from our hand because yeah, the King, uh he often has Kings and having a King is not helpful in that case. Um yeah, I was right when the thing, although the solver isn't sure yet, as you can see. Um yeah, if you have a queen instead of a king, um it seems to be very close if we should call or not. Yeah, if the solver has no converged equilibrium yet, um yeah, when you just have to go with your guts and yeah, it should be very close anyways. This unfortunately is already the last hand I got marked for today, but um as we got some time left, um I guess we could train some with the PLO Trainer. Um Twitch chat, do you have any recommendations? What you would like me to train? Hmm, this is most likely only having pre-flop uh stuff, but yeah. Which spots do you want to learn more about? I'm open to suggestions. If I, if nobody writes something I'm open to suggestions if I, if nobody writes something and then I will decide. Yeah, it seems like nobody is interested in recommending anything, so let's go with um what is interesting. Let's happen under the gun race and we are on the button. Facing three red, okay, that's something different. Yeah, okay, we can facing three red, okay. Okay, that's also nice. Uh, so cut off versus uh cut off versus button. We could do yeah, let's do cut off versus button facing a three red. And yeah, it crushed. Seems like it doesn't want us to do this. Uh, crap. Uh, how do we? Okay, it's closed down now. Hmm, let me reopen it very quickly and see can get it to work again. Okay, it's open. And maybe we can do some training now. Raise, re-raise, fold, fold and download. Now it's working. Uh, so we folding twenty-one percent. That's always good to uh remember these numbers. To have like a baseline idea uh what to do. We are four betting, very high amount. Almost fourteen percent. And yeah, call most of the time full sum. So yeah, let's get into the training, I guess. Um, I always forget how to do this. Uh, is it bucket training? Is it equity buckets training? What the fuck do I have to click again? Think this. Hmm, yeah, seems to be correct and we also need to make it a lot harder. Yeah, so let's make it uh, but he only suggests very tough hands. Unfortunately, um the fools are often not that tough, but yeah, not much we can do about that. Um, okay, we refresh the hand and we will now start the training. This looks like a call. Correct. Next one. Hmm, call two. This might be a fold. I guess so. Correct. Ah. Any ideas? I think that's probably a fold, right? Correct. Okay, no mistake yet. Uh, that is a call. No. No call. That's also a fold. Okay, so probably with um if we are not blocking our own spade draw, this should be called. So first tiny mistake. Oh, that's also a tough one. Hmm, I guess this is, the fold is not um for this hand. Um, I guess this is a re-raise. I hope so. Yes, it is. This might be a re-raise too. Yeah, I think so. Yeah, nice. Um huh, that's pretty bad hand. I didn't knew, but this is opened in the first place. Um, call, okay. Uh, fold. This might be a speculative re-raise. Sometimes he's throwing in stuff like this, but gr, not sure about this one because that's more disconnected than I like it to be. What do you think, Twitch chat? Can we re-raise or should we fold or just call? I'm still undecided yet. In gamer, most of the time would not re-raise, I guess, but it might be the right answer. Let's go with re-raise and it's correct. Oh, this one is too disconnected to re-raise, I guess. Yep. Uh, this one is interesting too, but I would just call. Oh, it's even close. You don't lose much if you fold. Uh, this could be a re-raise. Yeah, let's go for a re-raise. Nice. Another re-raise. Fold, I assume. Uh, if you want to get most out of that, you should also um test your own abilities and always make your mind up uh what you should do now. Uh, it will be better uh once I upload this on YouTube because when you can pause, so sometimes I click very fast and you might not be that fast. Uh, re-raise. And call could be a re-raise too, but I go with call. Okay, it's not close. It's an easy call. Uh, this could be a re-raise. Okay, re-raise, nice. Is this the same hand we just had two hands ago? When it was a fold? Yeah. Uh, this is a bit, the cards are a bit low to re-raise. I think so. Calling might be the way to go. Yeah. Oh, out of position with not that well connected queens. Chat suggestions? I, I am, yeah, fold is it could be a call too, but I also think fold is correct. Right? As you can see, it's very close. Oh, that's also a tough one. Probably a fold, I say. Let's see. No, that's a call. Okay, uh, that can, when you hit something, you often know that you are very good now. Uh, so I say, oh, this but very disconnected stuff. This might be a fold. In gamer would never fold, but uh, let's see. Okay, it's not even close. It's not even close. This is a call. No, no. It's good, it's probably needed to make my call. Uh, but the re-raise. That's annoying. Annoying. I'm annoyed. Uh call. No. Oh. So these sort of fans suck. This is better. This is a call. This is a fold. Yeah, this is a call. This is another call. More calls. Ach. Often we once are fooled. Uh, okay, let's go. Yeah. Uh, this might be a re-raise. Let's try this. Okay, that's close and it's actually a re-raise. Uh, a re-raise. A re-raise. Uh, hi. Thirteen percent or fourteen percent was his re-raise. So this is probably in there too. Yeah. Uh, call. No, that's actually too weak to call. When, although uh the other ones, that were folded, we're had the most of the time a deng line. This hand has four cards working together, so I go with call. And I'm wrong, but only slightly. I go with fold as we have no, oh, it was um the button is supposed to defend very light against three reds with all sorts of kings, but we are now having another situation, so I go with fold. It's not even close. I go call. Uh, this is a fold. This might be another fold. Oh, I misclicked. I was actually trying to click fold. Yeah. Stupid me. So that's a three red. Uh, that's call. No, that's also a fold. That's probably a fold. And calling is way better. This is very surprising to me. Okay. Okay, uh, re-raise. Call, uh call. Re-raise. Yeah, he often goes crazy with these uh jack-check hands. Um, raising pot. Raising pot, raising pot, really? Uh, could be a call. Raising pot, okay. Uh, eighty-two percent. Not too bad. Um, uh, the ace-king deuce was very surprising. I want to uh look into that a bit more. Uh, ace-king three-three, is this handled the same way? Uh, what happens with ace-king six-six? Now we cannot make the wheel anymore. This might be a different beast. Yeah. That's what I, okay, so if the ace is connected with the low pair, then you can defend it, but not if um you cannot make the wheel. Uh but at some point, um, this has to go the other direction. Um is nine-nine, then again, good enough to defend. Uh, hmm. At least with the ace size, you it seems good enough, but ten-ten should be fine, right? Yeah, only the rainbow version folds and some also want to get the money in if you have, if you are double suited. Yeah, let's uh pick another spot. I wonder, uh, I think I never did this training. Um button versus UTG. Um, I also um don't like the PLO trainer that much anymore. I mean, it's very good to learn a pre-flop, but it's really annoying that they have almost no sims for post-flop. And that's um where it feels like I need to improve the most. And yeah, I cannot do it here because turn sims are basically not in there at all. I mean, we are only like two boards and when the flop also has to go check-check and yeah, and I also discovered, um, I think it's a bug, but not sure. Um, maybe I did something wrong, but I doubted. Um, yesterday I was putting my own uh ranges in which um were from a sim I ran myself. And it was just not working. Um, the numbers were completely off compared to the numbers with Monka server. And yeah. I mean, Jay Nandes says that you can also put your own um sims into that, but it's actually not true. I mean, it just didn't work. I was copying uh the, what is it called? CSV or something? Um, ranges to clipboard as he recommended in the video. And yeah, it just didn't work. Um, yeah, and I messaged him about that, but I think he might not talk to me anymore because I made a YouTube video um where I said that GG poker, um, you cannot beat the high stakes, at least not um if you don't get a lot of rakeback. And yeah, as example, I used his graph, which he used publicly on his stream, where he was losing excluding the rakeback. And yeah, since then, he's very mad at me. And so yeah, I don't know if he will uh talk to me about that soon, but yeah, so good little uh story. Uh, yeah, let's start with the training, I guess. But yeah, um as I said, it's very useful um to learn pre-flop, especially if you like me had a huge um break of like three or four years and never used a solver before. And yeah, here you can learn it pretty quick and pretty good, but for post-flop it sucks. Um, I mean, it's supposed to getting better, but yeah, at the moment, a lot of sims uh are still missing. Yeah, but vision uh is also like not that user-friendly and it's also often very annoying because you have to click everything again and when it jumps back to um some settings that you changed before and we're so, yeah, it's, it's, none of these is perfect, but yeah. At the moment, vision would also be more helpful for me than this one. But yeah, um, I guess in the end, if you want to get very good or really good, you need to um do some own sims, um especially because all these multi-way pots are neither included here nor in vision, unless vision has it now, but um, as I tested it, um, it was not in there. Yet, so let's go to another bucket training. Uh, the re-raising, okay, we call not that much and we re-raise also basically not often. Uh, we again have to make it more difficult. How do you, by the way, how do you use a poker training trainer? Do you make these trainings very often? I mean, I don't do it that much. Most of the time I just look into hands where I was unsure about. Um, so yeah, but other people might use it in a different way. So refresh hands. Then start training. Oh, that's a call, I say. Next, another call. Okay, that's a re-raise. Surprisingly, this is a re-raise. Yeah, I guess um this is because we should have a lot of fold equity. And yeah, we unblock uh kings and queens, for example. Although we are not meant that many queens being opened and also stuff like ace-king, something should fold. That's very nice having our hand. Whoa. Call or fold? Calls. Hey? Why is call wrong? I click call. I make zero point one-eight BB. Ah, okay, okay, okay. I see, I see. This is like, again, uh, the solver is unsure about this spot. And yeah, for some reason he wants to re-raise hundred percent, although the call although the call has more EB. Yeah, okay, so you, um, train, um, you go way more in detail. You select hand categories and stuff and don't do like random hands like we do here. Yeah, I also think once you got it figured out, you at some point will not make that many and that, uh, that much, that many mistakes anymore. And yeah, if you lose some EB here and there, it's not that bad. And yeah, I also think you don't want to stick to these ranges all the time as some people slavishly go after these GTO ranges, although against some duels, which are lot loser, we should not go with the GTO ranges, but should punish them very hard with a lot of free bets and also should call a lot more because against people who have no clue what they are doing, you want to see a lot of flops and try to stack them. And yeah. Jay Nandes also said that he doesn't divide that much from GTO because yeah, that's a good baseline and he, um, thinks that this is correct, but I kind of have to disagree with that, especially post-flop because some fish are like peeling with any hit, like any pair with gut shot, with any flush draw they call. And then you obviously have to barrel way harder and also value bet a lot more thin. And yeah. That's something you need to work on in your game too. And yeah, that's not possible with all these GTO stuff. So you have to go into this little thing here, make assumptions about your opponent and figure it out yourself. I'm not sure if there is a lot of exploitive play in Mastermind. I think, by the way, the best coach by far in the Mastermind is Schuller-Alt. And also his streams were, um, very good always, but for some reason, um, I think he's not streaming anymore or very little and you also cannot watch them in hindsight. I was always watching. I was basically never watching him live, but watched some of his content later, but that's not available anymore, unfortunately. But yeah, I would love to see more stuff of him because that's basically the only, um, PLO, um, YouTuber or Twitch streamer, which I like and which I watch sometimes. Like everyone else, I, yeah, I think they, I don't learn anything and I also don't enjoy watching them that much because they suck. None, when they don't suck, but yeah. I don't think that I can get a lot of knowledge from their streams anymore. And what I also don't like from other streamers, um, most are just like making entertainment uh, and not being educational at all. They are just like, "Oh yeah, hit, I...!" Or "Hold!" And yeah, they just make a big show and in reality, they probably don't care really. I mean, if I play six tables, I just click the buttons and often I don't even look what happened in the all-in. And yeah, I can't imagine that people really, uh, are like fevering in these spots and are like pressing their thumbs to hit or to not hit and stuff. So yeah, I mean, for me, that's not part of being a professional gamer. You just do the thing, but you think it's placebo and you don't even look because it's longer now, but it will be good for you. But yeah, I guess this is for entertainment purpose more than for anything else. What has to be a fold? No, to call. Okay, that's a call. Yep, that's... ah! Okay, that's actually a re-race. But that's... That's tough. Hi, hi, Foxboker. That's a surprising re-race. That seems like the EB is not that far different. That's also, that was also an example from what I mean. I mean, you sometimes, at some point have it figured out and yeah, it doesn't matter that much what you do. So yeah, you make a tiny mistake, but yeah, it shouldn't hurt your bottom line that much. Uh, what's this? Correct. And this is a re-race. This might be a re-race too. Let's try it. Uh, okay. Okay. Huh? I guess, okay, this was again, uh, the EB was better, uh, was bigger from a call, if I saw it correctly. Uh, this is, um, button versus EP. Missed fold. This is a call. This might be a re-race. Or call. Or fold. Ah! Twitch chat, what do you think? Is this, what is this? This is feels tough. I... I think it's either a re-race or a fold. I'll take call. I'm completely lost. If I click something, that's more or less random. Okay. It's a call. Although it's pretty disconnected. Re-race, correct. Or could be called to a re-race. But was very close again. Uh, re-race. Yep, and fold, and fold, and re-race. No, but it's close. If people over-fold a bit, you could put this in your re-racing range too. That's a call, I guess. That might be call or raise. Raise, that's probably a call. Yeah, okay. But 75% is not that bad. I guess that's also enough to beat the games if you don't battle wrecks only. That's a call, correct. Let's see if I can beat your 75%. But we have a quite bad start already, so it might be tough to get there. Uh... Fold. Oh, that's... That can be everything. I mean, it's not a fold, but can be a raise and a call. Wrong, but yeah, 0.03. Okay. So, okay, PLO 2 and PLO 5. And therefore you bought the PLO trainer. It would be really hard to grind this back because you have to win many stakes in order to get even only with the PLO trainer, re-race. Yes. Uh, fold? No! What? Fuck you. That's never ever correct. Yeah, okay. But this looks insanely spewy to me. And this is considered to be a re-racing hand. So the... If someone offered me a bet for 1K, I would luckily have taken that one. So this is very surprising. Need to make a screenshot of this. That's... That's very sick. Okay, let's go to the next one. That's a call. Yeah, and that's a fold. And that's another fold. And the call. What happened? Ah, okay. It's just loading my hand. Uh, you think that he's raising suited ace-plus pocket pair? Always. Because this hand has a lot of playability. Because a multi-way pot is not that bad. Yeah, but this is, um, the, in this, um, thing, um, we already had an open from early position and he wanted to three-bet. And I don't think that the playability is great from 9-9, 10-ace with 10-high suit. So if your theory would be correct, um... Then you should just call, right? No, although, no, that's not correct because we don't have the nuts suit. Hmm... Okay, next spot. Uh, call and fold and call and fold and call and fold and puke. Yeah, okay, so we flat, your theory is we flat with playability, but if we have a lot of equity, but not that much playability, then we prefer a three-bet. This is a tough one. Um, this could be everything. I go with re-race. Bam! Hmm... How many more hands are coming here? Uh, okay, next one. This could be a re-race. Boys and girls, what do you think? Or is it just a fold? I think he doesn't like these small cards too much. Okay, one vote for call? Yeah, I'm... Yeah. This is, I don't know. I go with, uh, with your assumption. Okay, you are right. Uh, this is a, might be a re-race. I go with re-race. Or is it a call? It's a re-race. Uh, that's a call. That's a fold. That's a... Hmm, that's something I cannot determine yet. Hmm... Twitch chat, is this a call, a fold or a re-race? A call? Ah, yeah, calls makes the most sense, I assume. Yeah, okay, that's not even that tough. Uh, that's probably... He's... Folded? No, yes, okay, that's correct. Uh, re-race, re-race, re-race. Yeah. Folded. Let's see if I can get the 75%. Uh... Da-da-da-da. Call. Next, and call. And fold. And bam, 84%! Even better than that. Yeah, okay, I guess that's very good taking into account that I started with like five wrongs or something. So yeah, I think that's... That's not too bad. Uh... Yeah, what, what, what's the next one we want to train? This... What is a cool sport to train? Um... Let's go with this one. MP versus EP. I think I never did that. Let's get a baseline idea. I think we three-bet like 4% and we call like 5% or something? Yeah, okay, 5% and 5%. We fold a lot of stuff and even three aces are getting folded. Are we also getting folded if, if having a suit? No, when they're getting re-raced. Okay, so... Uh, let's get into the training. Yeah, that's what I was talking about. You had, at some point, get a very good idea and I also feel like I'm not improving that much really. I'm at like, most of the time, at like 80, 80%, 85%, but don't get better. This is a call or a fold. I get, I think it's a call. This is an easy fold. Ah, okay, this is bullshit. 100%, we need to make this a lot more difficult. Uh, refresh hands. So let's start again with a difficult one. Um, I go with re-race. These ace-jack-ten-staffy really likes. Correct. Uh, this is... I have no clue, but I think it's a call. Twitch chat. This early position versus MP. Versus middle position. What do you think? I say call, but I'm not sure. Okay, seems like you... Okay, you also say call and that's correct. Uh, that's... That could be everything. In my mind, probably a fold. Or call again, or even re-race. I think I go with fold. I go, though, this hand is sort of pretty. Can we fold these beauty? I guess so. No, we can't. We should re-race. Okay, that's a re-race. I also think that he might call with like jacked-in-98, but re-race this one. For some reason, he chooses the one with a gap in it. I mean, that was what I... This is the same hand, right? Just the suits changed a little bit, so that was an easy one. Uh, that's a call. That's a call. That... Is this the same hand again? No, it's a bit different. I think before it was, before that it was jacked-in-96, now it's a bit different. But re-race, correct. Uh... Can we re-race such a small connector? Or is it a call or a fold even? That's another very tough one. Um... Twitch chat, any ideas? I don't know, to be honest. Uh... In-game, I probably click the re-race button, but, uh, this is probably not correct. Hmm... Okay, I'd say call is GTO and this is also the answer on Twitch chat. Yeah, okay, nice. Uh... This should be a call. This should probably also be a call. This is nothing at all. Uh, this is a call. Yep, but very close. Uh... He re-raced that sort of rubbish a lot on the button, but not sure if it's good enough to re-race this too, um, if you're middle position. Twitch chat, can you help me out? Um... Is this a call or is this a fold or is this a re-race? You think it's a re-race, I say it's a call. And I'm wrong, it's a re-race. You... Seems like you train very hard with these things. Or you looked it up. Ah, what? You're very good. I think you are better than me. Ah, what, you're very good. I think you are better than me by doing this stuff. What's your win rate and what limits do you play? I have to avoid you on the tables for sure. That's a fold. That's a call. Uh, that... We had this hand, right? Raise it. So we getting some presence. Um... Oof. Call, re-raise, fold. Lost again. Ahhh! I wouldn't be surprised if we can re-raise this beauty. Yeah, we can. Uh, that's yeah, complete rubbish. That was easy. Uh that's probably... Da-da, fold? What do you um do with cryptos? Uh... What is it called? Uh... Guild farming? Or just bought earlier and now... Making too much with crypto? Yeah, crypto is also a very um interesting topic to me. Okay, so you also, are you actually making money with trading? For me, it always feels like trading is stupid and it's also not worth the time. Because you have to invest a lot of time. Yeah, I'm not trading at all. I'm just um... Unfortunately, I didn't get in that early. I'm just huddling. And yeah, most of the stuff I got is um Bitcoin and Ethereum and some other stuff. I was lucky. I bought some Binance um early but didn't invest it too much. Was just a bit of a gamble and now Binance goes through the roof. And it's not on the... On the moon, it's on the Mars already, I feel like. But we still don't know what to do in this hand. Uh, fuck, fold, no. We should re-raise with that sort of suit. That's disgusting. Yeah, I um, I used, what did I use? I used um Binance and Kraken. But yeah, don't, don't, as I said, I don't trade. I just huddle and yeah, send um... And I don't store my coins on a, on an exchange. Yeah, you, I think you probably can also make some money. Um if you um are watching, what is it called? The Reddit um Wall Street Bets very closely. And yeah, when they recommend coins, especially the small ones. When you can probably get in early on the pump and dump and might get lucky sometimes. Is this a call or is it, no, it's not a fold, yeah. That is, is this again as pure re-raise? Yeah, many poker players got in very early. Uh I hope you didn't burn your hands playing the ICO game too much. I think even, even if you got in late into the ICO um stuff. You could uh... You could be able to not lose that much or even make a small profit. Because this was only, you were not playing against institutions or something. You were just playing against other guys that have, where most have no clue what they are doing. And if you did good research, you were able to pick a lot of good projects. But you have to keep your emotions under control. It's basically like poker, so you don't have to FOMO or... Or there's other, or fat, so fear of missing out or... Fear uncertainty and daft is the other thing. I go with, what is it? Help me out, chat. Ah, fuck. Is it a re-raise or is it a fold or a call? No clue against early re-raise. Bam! Okay, that's a fold. Um, that's a nice one too. Um, what's your win rate when you play with stacks? Uh, let's go with call. Is it a call? Is it a re-raise? Re-raise, yep. And a call. And a call. And a re-raise. And a fold. Call, no, that one is a re-raise. Okay, okay, okay. Uh call, no, re-raise, but it's, it's, it's close. Re-raise. Uh, call. Fold. No, yeah, okay, that's correct. Hmm... Fold. Another fold. Ugh! Eh, fold? Is it a fold? Twitch chat, any ideas? No, it's a call. Okay. I mean, it feels, to me, it feels like this hand sucks. Because when there are like four more people behind, we can re-raise. And you don't, I mean, at least I don't like it that much to call re-raise with this. And I guess you will call a re-raise too. Easy fold, um... That's a call. Yep, and a fold. Another fold. Um, re-raise, fold. Fold, yeah, and fold, and fold, and... Re-raise, no, but it's not losing that much money. I mean, yeah, but it's a call, okay. Uh, the call. Fold. Call. Fold. This has to be a fold, right? Okay, 86% and that's very good. Um, unfortunately, I really have to go now. Um, was not looking at the time. Uh I hope you enjoyed it and yeah, if you didn't do already. Um, and if you want to get free coaching, check out my YouTube where I gave you the exact instructions. Okay, play a GG and you are winning a GG. That's very good. Okay, so um what, what stakes do you play? So I guess we got some more time because that's very interesting to me. Hmm... So with the rake bag and if you play locked on GG, you probably printing. So you say mid-stakes, so does this mean PLO 200, PLO 500? PLO 1K maybe even? Bet, isn't bet fair? Um, poker stars now, so um... Or I think we don't have a poker client anymore. Yeah, I think um GG is um on PLO 100 and PLO 200 maybe too. It's still beatable and yeah, but because the rake is not that much different. But once you move up to PLO 500 or even higher, the rake is just insane compared to other sides. Yeah, it was a pleasure talking to you. Um very fun stream, especially because people also took part and talked to me a bit. So I really enjoyed it, yeah. Thanks for watching. As I said, I really have to go. And yeah, don't forget to sign in for the free coaching if you are interested in that. Bye until next time.